Hello 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 chick hello hello
Sarva bhavmi, shakti shaali, permeshwa swistikaata Chaadey aay rahe chan baato banay, adibu marima Sarva bhavmi, shakti shaali, permeshwa swistikaata Chaadey aay rahe chan baato banay, adibu marima Du mandalma, du mandalma, vayu mandalma, mohako This room is now away Mahamare, ani kalju tharla tarva Adhinae payava, arishti dimaa Ridai vichar, vicharit banaunen gulaa Asta vyastaka ko, vatna varanma Samajlay maat, garne permeshvar ko, shanti le Raksa garca, hamilaay jivanma Samajlay maat, garne permeshvar ko, shanti le Raksa garca, hamilaay jivanma Kristko ajib, shanti ko aavat sunincha Sarva bhavmi, shakti shaali, permeshwa swistikaata Chaadey aay rahe chan baato banay, adibu marima Sarva bhavmi, shakti shaali, permeshwa swistikaata
Now once again, I would like to request with the Sharan, with the Mrl to charge the ministry. Thank you please.
Praise the Lord brother. Yeah brother, Jamasi Ki, maybe start now? Okay brother, go on.
Loving greetings to you all, the highly exalted, and in throne name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. It's a great privilege for me to join with you once again this morning in these three days of special spiritual meetings. We thank God for whatever the Lord has granted to us in answer to the prayers of the saints already during the past two days. And also speaking to us this morning in the first session of the Bible study. Now prayerfully shall we once again turn to our theme verse in Mark's Gospel chapter 4 and verse 39. Mark's Gospel chapter 4 and verse 39, as well brother Emmanuel will be reading it for us, we will all look into our Bibles. Shall we look to the Lord in prayer for His grace and help? Loving heavenly Father, our gracious and mighty God, we thank and praise you for the privilege and honor given to us like Mary to sit at thy feet and to hear your word during these days of special spiritual meetings.
Brother go on, go on, continue to save time.
We do thank and praise you Lord for whatever you have done and accomplished during the past two days and even this morning in answer to the prayers of the saints scattered all over the globe, different parts who have been upholding us in their precious prayers. We thank you also Lord for the burden you have granted to thy dear people in Baraka gang talk, thy servant IK Dasnat and also his coworkers in praying and arranging these meetings. And also we are very thankful to you for a very relevant thing you have brought to us, burdening thy servant with regard to it. We thank you Lord for whatever you have done and accomplished. And now we humbly pray that we remain satisfied by hearing your word, but we may put one step forward in obeying and also applying your word to our hearts. We may not only be receivers but also doers of your word. Lord we thank you for what you have granted to us even this morning and now again as we look into your precious word and also the theme which you have given to us, we pray that thou speak to us from thy throne of grace. And we both as we stand to minister to you thy people, we pray Lord thy good hand may be upon us, thy fresh anointing may be upon us and none may be deprived of their portion. Thou will therefore cleanse us, empty us and fill us with your precious word. We acknowledge you Lord that without you we cannot do anything, thou therefore stand by us. Thou put your words into our mouth, helping giving thy word and also thy servant in translating your word. Above all we all may be able to have the grace of receiving your word and understanding your word. Now committing ourselves, our time and thy word into your enabling hands, seeking thy blessing upon it. We and also we pray there may not be any disturbance even in the internet and the system, all may be able to hear thy word clearly wherever they are. For we ask this prayer with thanksgiving in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Mark's Gospel chapter 4 and verse 39. The small fragment has been given to us as a theme for these meetings, peace be still. Dear beloved, we are living in a peaceless world. Man, wealth or wisdom is not able to bring this peace in this peaceless world. As we saw yesterday, it is only the Prince of Peace, our loving Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, he can bring this peace in our hearts, in our lives, in our families and also in this world. Last, last evening we dwelt upon two sets of words. In verse 37, we saw the first set of words, great storm. And the second set of words we saw in verse 39, a great calm. We saw first of all the consequences of the great storm. And then we saw the source of the great calm that can come. And we saw this great source has been none other than the Prince of Peace, the Lord Jesus Christ. And we saw that the Prince of Peace, he brought peace on this earth. And when he was upon this earth, he preached peace. And then we saw that he himself is peace. And then fourthly we saw in him is peace. And that is why we saw 53, he is the author of peace, origin of peace. And then we saw he is the unique giver of this peace. And finally we also saw the great prize because of which, at the cost of that prize, he gave this peace to us. Now this morning we are going to see three more things, God willing as time permits us. First of all, the peace that the Prince of Peace gives us. What the peace is. Then secondly, the work or the ministry of peace by the God of peace. And then thirdly we will see what should be our response and attitude having received this peace. First of all we will see what is this peace that the Prince of Peace has given to us or is willing to give us. Our Prince of Peace gives us a five-fold peace, dear beloved. First of all, the peace that the Lord gives us is a perfect peace. That is why it is an incomparable peace. In this world certain things may give us peace, but they are not perfect. But the peace of God, the peace of God alone is a perfect peace. We find that in the book of Isaiah and chapter 26. Yes. This is a peace which is a perfect peace given to us by the Lord. But there is a condition here for this peace. Our minds must be fixed on him and we must trust in him. This is what the enemy would not allow us to do. Try to divert our minds to the things of the world and also the people of the world. And that is why dear beloved, whenever we are disturbed, whenever there is an attack for our peace, we should concentrate and fix our mind on the person of the Lord Jesus Christ alone. We should look to the Lord Jesus Christ not only for our life of faith, but also to receive and experience this perfect peace in us. So first of all it is a perfect peace. Then secondly, the peace that the Lord gives us is an abundant peace. Can we turn to Psalm 37 and verse 11? Psalm 37 and verse 11. See the mention of the abundant peace here. This shows that there is no lack for the peace that the Lord gives to us. It is in great abundance, great abundance made available to us. Because this is how the Lord gives us this great peace and there is no lack of it which is given to us in great abundance. But like the perfect peace, there is also a condition here. There is a requirement of meekness and humility in our lives. As, as we are meek and as we are humble, not only in a worldly manner, we should have this true sincere spiritual humility which is what will bring this abundance of peace in us. The Lord would not give his peace to those who are not meek, those who are proud. The giver of our peace, the Lord Jesus Christ, the Prince of Peace, when he was upon this earth, he very clearly demonstrated humility in his own life. So dear beloved, as his children, we also need to be humble in order to receive this abundant peace in us. Then thirdly, the peace that the Lord gives to us is great peace. First of all it is perfect peace. Secondly, it is abundant peace. And then thirdly, it is great peace, dear beloved. Shall we turn to Psalm 119 and verse 165? Great peace have thee which love thy law and nothing shall offend them. For those who seek the word of God, who love the word of God, to them this great peace is given. And that is why as the Psalmist says here, we need to delight and love the word of God. Our Lord is the Prince of Peace and we are privileged and blessed to have him in our lives. And then we can go on to maintain this peace as we read the word of God and delight in the word of God. And then fourthly, the peace that the Lord gives us is a covenanted peace. See the book of Isaiah and chapter 54. Isaiah 54 and verse 10. It is a covenant of peace, the word of God says. He says the covenant of my peace will I not remove from them. We know our Lord is a covenant keeping God. He is a promise fulfilling God. Many times we make promises but we don't keep them, honor them and fulfill them. But our Lord is not like that, dear beloved. Irrespective of our keeping the covenant or breaking the covenant, he keeps his covenant with us. Prince of Peace, he keeps his covenant of peace with us. That is why even though we fail the Lord and disappoint the Lord many a times, but there is still this peace which he does not withdraw from us. Then fifthly, the peace that the Lord gives us is a perennial peace. We find that in the book of Isaiah chapter 66 and verse 12. The first part of the verse we read, for thus say the Lord, behold, I will extend peace to her like a river. We find this peace is like a river because there is always water in the rivers. The rivers in Palestine and the land of Israel, they are unlike the rivers in India. And the rivers and most of the rivers in India, they go dry. But the rivers there in Palestine, in the land of Israel, there is always this flow of water. That is, that is why the Lord compares his peace to such rivers where there is a perennial flow of water. So this is the five-fold peace our Lord is able to give us. First of all it is a perfect peace. And it is given under the condition that our mind is fixed on it and also we trust in him. Secondly, the peace that the Lord gives to us is in abundance, there is no shortage, there is no lack of it. But there is a condition, we must be lovers and delighters of the word of God. This is the reason why even though David went through many troubles and trials in his life, he had the peace of God in him because he delighted in the word of God. And the, and the third peace that the Lord gives us is great peace. And again there is a condition, we have to love the word of God. And again, there is a condition, we have to love the word of God.
यसमा पनि तर सर्टर छ, कि हामीले परमेश्वरको ब्योवस्तालाई छै, प्रेम गर्न पर्छ
I'm sorry, the abundant peace is given to us on the condition of our humility.
र जुन्नै माफ गर्नुस, अघि माझ दोस्रोमा बिरछै, आज जुन्नै प्रशस्त सांति छ, त्यो छै, हाम्रो नम्रतामा निर्भर गर्दछ, अथवा दिनतामा
And this great peace is given to us on the condition of our loving the word of God.
र यो जुन्नै तेस्रो जुन्नै सांति छ, अथवा चुलो सांति छ, यो छै, हाम्रो, जो परमेश्वरको प्रेमलाई, हामी प्रेम कर्छौ, यसमा आदरिछ
And thirdly, fourthly, the, the peace that the Lord gives us is with a covenant, which will never be broken.
र जुन्नै, वाले तेस्रो, अथवा चौंतो सांति, हाम्रो दिनसानु भएकोछ, चौंतो, त्यो छै, बाचा पुर्न सांति हो, जस्यै परमेश्वरलाई हाईबाट आज तोड्नुहुन्न
He never withdraws his peace from us.
हाईबाट, वाले आप्नो सांति लाई निकाले लानुहुन्न
And then, fifthly, it is a perennial peace, there is no stoppage of this peace which we experience in our lives.
हाम्रो जीवनमा जुन्नै अनुभव कर्छ, यो पाँचौ सांति छ, यो छै, लगातार बहिरण्य सांति, जस्यै हाम्रो जीवनमा रुकिन सकिन्दैन
No, secondly, our God is known as a God of peace also.
र दोस्रो जामीले, हाम्रो परमेश्वर छै, आज सांति को परमेश्वर उन्छ
As a prince of peace.
वाहसारावंदा पहिला, जस्यै सांति को राजकुमार उन्छ
Secondly, he is the God of peace.
दोस्रो छै, वाह, सांति को परमेश्वर उन्छ
So as a God of peace, he keeps on working in this peace and doing his ministry of peace in the life of a believer.
यस्कान्ने, यो सांति, जो परमेश्वरको सांति, हाम्रो जीवनमा लेर छै, अब हामीले वाहको काम गर्न पर्छ, जस्यै वाहको शेवकाई गर्न पर्छ, जस्यै ओ, मिलाप्को शेवकाई
First of all, it is a promise that the Lord, this God of peace, will always be with us.
तयावंदा पहिला छै, वाहको यो प्रतिग्यहो, कि सांति को परमेश्वर छै, सदै हाम्रो साथमा रहनु उन्छ
See the book of Romans and chapter fifteen.
रोमीको पत्री पन्द्रह अध्याय
And verse thirty-three.
पन्द्रह अध्यायको त्यात्तिस पर
Now the God of peace be with you all, amen.
त्यात्तिस पर, अनि, अब सांतिका परमेश्वर, तिमीरु सबै संग रहुन, अमीन
So as a God of peace, he is our accompanier.
र वाह, सांति को परमेश्वर भए खण्डमा, वाह छै, सदै हाम्रो साथमा रहनु उन्छ
And that is why, in the life of David, even though he had to go through so many troubles, loneliness and difficulties and even danger for his life, he experienced the peace of God.
यो प्रभुकदास, दाउत पनि, जीवनमा जरै प्राकर कठिन्यारुमा, दुखारुमा, आज संकस्तारुमा, एकलो पनामा, याँसमा कि, कत्ती प्रकारको खतरारुको सामना गर्न पर्यता पनि, जान पर्यता पनि, आज सांति को परमेश्वर छै, वाहको साथमा आज रहेको थियो, यो वाह
And that is why in Psalm, and that is why in Psalm twenty-three and verse four he says, "E though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will not fear, for the water with me."
यस्कान्ने, वाले, आज भजनसंगत तेहीस रहेमा, अनुभवको साथमा लेख्नु उन्छ, यदि मृत्युको तराय बाट, मो, भायर जान पर्यता पनि, आज तपाईले मलाई दोराउनु, सम्बालनु उन्छ, किनान तवै मेरो साथमा उन्छ
Anybody else in such a circumstance will be filled with fear and they would be lacking peace, there will not be any peace in them.
यस्कान्ने, जाना इस्ता, अर्जिकोई हुनु उन्छ, जस्तै छैस्ता, आज डर भएको आवस्थामा, आज गइरनु भएकोछ, जस्मा छै, सांति को कमी, अथवा मसूस, र बेचैन आवस्थमा उन्छ
But David says, "Even in the valley of death, as death was nearing, as you could see death, signs of death, he had no fear but peace, because the God of peace was there."
तर दाउत छै, त्यो मृत्युको, आज छायामा, भायर गयता पनि, तराय को छायामा भायर गयता पनि, आज, उसलाई कुनै प्रकारको डर थिन, मृत्युको, किनान, परमेश्वर, त्यो सांति को परमेश्वर, वाहको साथमा उन्छ
Then secondly, in Romans chapter sixteen and verse twenty.
र दोस्रो छै, रोमी सोलह अध्यायको विष्पत्तमा
Ah, it is, the work of the Lord is to defeat, the God of peace defeats the enemy.
र दोस्रो छै, हामी देख्दैछौ, यो सांति को परमेश्वर छै, सैतानलाई छै, आज तिमीरका पाउन मनिकुल्छौ
Even as we heard yesterday, that the God of peace shall bruise Satan under your feet shortly.
जस्यै, हामीले इजे एरे काठिहु, मनन गएरे काठिहु, अनि, सांतिका परमेश्वरले, साढ़े, सैतानलाई, तिमीरका पाउन मनिकुल्छौ उन्छ
Oh, he will bring this Satan under our feet shortly.
आज एदमै साढ़े, सैतानलाई, वाले, हाम्रो कुट्टाको मुनि लेवन उन्छ
We cannot do that, we cannot defeat the enemy on our own.
हामी आफै, आप्नो सात्रुलाई जितन सब्द नौ, हामी आफै त्यो गर्न पनि सब्द इन्नौ
But the God of peace, doing his work in and through us, he will put Satan under feet, he will bring us the victory.
तर सांति को परमेश्वरले छै, आज हामीलाई, अथवा, हामीमा, अथवा, हामी मार्पाछै, आज सैतानको शिरलाई छै, वाले कुल्छौ
Ah, the enemy may try to threaten us and intimidate us many times.
जरै पल्ट, सात्रुलाई, हाम्रो धम्की दिन, हाम्रो जीवनमा अतंक फैराउन, आज कोशिस गर्छ
But the victory is ultimately ours.
तर अंतमा छै, आज अंतिम बिकल्प छै, परमेश्वरको, हाम्रो छै, जित्नै त्याँछ
We know in First Samuel chapter seventeen, how David quotes about his victory and how he could deliver the lamb from the mouth of the lion.
कसरै दाउतले छै, पहिला सामय सात्रा अध्यायमा, आप्नो अनुभव बताउन उन्छ, कसरै त्यो, भेडाका पाठ्यालाई छै, बोल्याई, आज आप्नो सात्रु बाट छै, खुशी रह्नु थियो
It happened, I'm sure, when David went against the lion, the lion would have roared at David, tried to threaten him and intimidate him.
न, उन्नुसक्छ, आज जब, दाउत छै, त्यो, पाठ्यो, खोषनकुनिम्ति, शिहाको सामना गर्त्यो, शिहान निष्ठनै गर्दैन त्यो, र उसलाई एदमै डर उपन्न गर्नु, खोशी बत्यो
But he was not afraid. He was not afraid of that lion.
तर शिहासमा जो डराहैन
He went boldly and fought against the lion and wrought that victory, because the God of peace was within him.
बढो सासको साथमा, सैया, शिहाको हात बाट, उसले, आज त्यो पाठ्यालाई छुट्टौन थियो, किनान लेखी, र वो विजय भन्थियो, किनान, सांति को परमेश्वर छै, वाहसमा उन्छ
Then thirdly, this God of peace is the one who sanctifies us.
र तेस्रो छै, जो परमेश्वरको सांति छ, यस्तै छै, हामलाई सुद्धा गर्ने, अथवा, पोहित्रा गर्ने काम गर्दछ
First Thessalonian chapter five.
पहिला तेस्रो नी, पाँचौ अध्याय
And verse twenty-three.
अत्यात्तिस पर, अब सांतिका परमेश्वर, आफैले, तिमीरलाई पुरा रितिले पोहित्र पालेका हाउन, अनि, तिमीरका सम्पूर्ण आत्म, प्राण र शरीर, हाम्रा प्रविष्कृष्टको आगमन सम्म, दोस्रै आवस्थामा, स्रक्तिर राखेका हाउन
Paul says here, "The God of peace will sanctify you holy."
प्रभुकदास पावली याँ भन्नु उन्छ, अब सांतिका परमेश्वर, आफैले, तिमीलाई पुरा रितिले पोहित्र पालेका हाउन
So in other words, it speaks about his constant work of sanctification, bringing us to holiness.
अथवा, यो पत्तोस, वाहको लगातारको, आज, हामीलाई पोहित्र करण गर्ने, आज वाहको यो सांति हो
Because the sanctification is a daily process and a continual process.
र जुन्नै सुद्धीकरण, अथवा, पोहित्रकरण छै, हाम्रो दिनहोको, यो दईनी, आज हाम्रो, आज हामी, हाम्रो जीवनमा गरिने कुरा हो
Because the world in which you and I are living, it is a defiled world, sinful world, and it tries to bring defilements in our lives.
किनान, तपाईर मो, आज जीरैको जो संसारछौ, त्यो छै, सम्पूर्ण पापले पुर्न, र अशुद्धताले पुर्न भरिएको, ले भरिएको संसारछ, जस्तै छै, हामीलाई, हाम्रो जीवनमा, अशुद्धता, आज लियवने काम, आज गरिगरिगर्द
Though there is the requirement of daily sanctification also in our lives.
याँगान्ना, हाम्रो जीवनमा दिनो, दईनी, अथवा, त्यो सुद्धीकरणको, पोहित्रकरणको, आज आवश्यकता पर्दछ
And this is what the, the, the God of peace will accomplish in our lives.
र यो कुरा छै, जो सांतिका परमेश्वरले, हाम्रो जीवनमा छै, पुरा गण्य उन्छ, अथवा, प्राप्त गण्य उन्छ
Ah, this is, this is his constant work, and he does that through his work.
र वाहको वचन द्वारा छै, त्यो काम छ, हाम्रो जीवनमा लगातार, वाले, गरिकन, यस्ताई पुरा गण्य उन्छ
And that is why we see what Paul says in Ephesians chapter five.
यस्कान्ने, हामी देख्दैछ, एफिशिको पत्रमा, प्रभुकदास पावली, के बनु उन्छ
Verses twenty-six and twenty-seven.
छब्बीस अनि, सताइस पर
Ephesians twenty-six and twenty-seven.
एफिशिक पाँचौ अध्यायको छब्बीस अनि, सताइस पर, त्यस्लाई वचन द्वारा, जालको स्नानले, सुद्धा गरी, पोहित्र पार्नलाई, र महिमित मंडली ग्रुपमा, त्यस्लाई, आप्नो साम, उपस्थित गराउनलाई, जस्मा, दाग, वाचारी, वायस्त्र और कुनै कुरा, उदैन, तर त्यो पोहित्र र निष्कलन उन्छ
See in verse twenty-six, Paul says, "That he may sanctify and cleanse by the washing of water the word of God."
याँगान्ले, छब्बीस पत्ना, प्रभुकदास पावली भन्नु उन्छ, त्यस्लाई, वचन द्वारा, जलको स्नानले, सुद्धा गरी, पोहित्र पार्नलाई
That is why the Lord brings this word of sanctification, word of cleansing, again and again, in, in, in our midst.
याँगान्ना, हाम्रो विष्णाप प्रभुले, आज विविध प्रकारलाई आप्नो, जुन्नै, हामीलाई सुद्धा पार्ने, हामीलाई पोछोको पार्ने, आज वचन, लियवने काम गण्य उद्दृश्य
Because he wants to present his church, you and I put together, without sparring and without any wrinkle.
किनान, वाले, तपाईर मलाई, एकसाथ जुर, मिलायर, दाग, चावलीन भएको, पोहित्र र निदुस, आज मंडली वाले, उपस्थित गराउन्छ, तानुन्छ
He does not want any blemish also in his church.
र वाहको मंडलीमा, वाले, एउटा दाग पनि देख्नछनुहुन्न
So when the God, it is done by the God of peace, and when he does this work.
र यो छै, परसांतिका परमेश्वरले, गण्य उन्छ, जब त वाले, यो काम गण्य उन्छ
As Paul says in verse twenty-seven, then we are presented as a glorious church unto himself.
तब मात्र, पावली भन्छ, तब, अर्ज महिमित मंडली ग्रुपमा, हामी उपस्थित गराइछौ
So this is being accomplished in our lives, dear believer, day by day, by the God of peace, through his precious work.
यस्कान्ने, दिन प्रतिको जीवनमा, यो काम छै, आज सांतिका परमेश्वरले, वाले, आप्नो, बहुमूल्य, अमूल्य वचन द्वारा छै, हाम्रो जीवनमा, आज यो सुद्धीकरणको काम, पोहित्र गर्ने काम छै, गरी रहेको उद्दृश्य
Then fourthly, shall we turn to the book of Hebrews and chapter thirteen?
अब चौंतो कुरा, इब्रू तेरा अध्यायमा इपल्ट उन्छौ
Hebrews chapter thirteen.
इब्रू तेरा अध्याय
And verses twenty and twenty-one.
बीस अनि, एकाइस पर रु, अब सांतिका परमेश्वरले, जस्तै, भेडार, भेडारका महानकोठाला, हाम्रा प्रविष्कृष्टलाई, अनंत वाचको रगत द्वारा, मरेकार बाट बोलनु भएव, तिमीलाई हरेक असल काममा, वाहको इच्छा पालन गर्नकुनिम्ति, शिद्ध पालेका हाउन, र वाहको दृश्यमा, जिय अति मनपर्दछ, सौ ईश्वरीश्वरी द्वारा, तिमीरमा गरेका हाउन, वालाई नै सदा सर्वदा, महिमा, बहिरौस, अमीन
Here we read about the fourth and the fifth work of the God of peace in our lives.
र हामी याँ चौंतो कुरा, जो परमेश्वरको सांति को कामलाई, हामी, हाम्रो जीवनमा, भएको, हुने कुरा लाग्दैछौ
Fourthly, Apostle Paul, the writer of this epistle, he says, "He enables us, makes us perfect to do his will."
र प्रेय पौले चाहिए, वाको यो पत्रमा आज भनुहुन्छ, वाले हाम्रा चाहिए आज शिद्ध पानकर्नी वाह सक्सम उनुहुन्छ, वाको शांतिद्वारा
Oh, this he does, the God of peace does this through the blood of the everlasting covenant.
र यो जुन्तै शांतिक परमेश्वरले वाको अनन्त वाचको रगत द्वारा यो काम गणुहुन्छ, ताकि वाको इच्छा चाहिए आमी पूरा गर्न्छ
He, he makes us perfect in every good work to do his will.
वाको प्रत्येक असल काममा आज हाम्रा शिद्ध पारेका न, वाको इच्छा पानन गर्ने भनुहुन्छ
We cannot obtain this perfection, attain unto this perfection on our own.
आमी अफ्वे कोशिश द्वारा त्यो शांति अथवा त्यो शिद्धता मा आमी पुग्न सक्दैनु, आमी शिद्ध बन्न सक्दैनु
But the God of peace working in our lives, he does this work.
र शांतिको परमेश्वर जस्तै हाम्रो जीवनमा यस प्रकारले काम गणुहुन्छ
And he does this in order that we may do his will.
आज वाले त्यसै कारण गणुहुन्छ, ताकि हामले वाको इच्छालाई पूरा गर्न्छ
Otherwise, otherwise, daily believer, we cannot do the Lord's will on our own.
नत्र वन्दकी प्रेयरो, हाम्रा अपने आज कोशिश द्वारा, यत्न द्वारा हामले वाको इच्छा पूरा गर्न्छ
Ah, because there are so many compulsions that come in our lives when we want to seek to do his will.
यसकान्हले यस्ता केही हामले वाको इच्छा पूरा गर्ने कोशिकर्यो बने, यस्ता कत्ती प्रकारको बाद्यतारु हाम्रो जीवनमा आइपढ्यो छ
But here, the word, the God of peace, he works in us so that we are able to seek his will and also do his will.
र परमेश्वरको आज शांतिक परमेश्वरले चाहिए, आज हाम्रा वाको इच्छा पूरा गर्नकर्निम्ति चाहिए, वाको शांतिद्वारा वसन्द द्वारा हाम्रा साथ पूरै हुन्छ
And then we see fifthly, while doing that work, he also makes us to please our Lord र पाँचो कुरा And do that which is well pleasing in his sight.
र पाँचो कुरा चाहिए, वाको इच्छा जो हामी पूरा गर्छ, इसको सात सातमा वाको, वाला खुशी पाने पूरा र आमी गर्दछौं
Ah, that is how we are able to please our Lord.
यस प्रकारले जाहिर, हाम्रो प्रभुलाई खुशी पानु सक्छौं
So first of all, as a God of peace, he is with us, as an accompanier of peace.
सर्वन्दा पहिला चाहिए, शांतिको परमेश्वर हाम्रो साथमा रनुहुन्छ, र वाले सदै वाको आज साथ हाम्रा दिनुहुन्छ
We can call it as an accompanying peace.
र यस्ता चाहिए, हामले यस्ता भन्न सक्छौं की साथ दिने शांति
And then he will bring Satan under our feet shortly, enabling us to experience victory.
र हाम्रा त्यो विजय अनुभव गर्नकर्निम्ति चाहिए, परमेश्वरले त्यो शांतिको परमेश्वरले चाहिए, हाम्रो सत्रलाई चाहिए, हाम्रो पाउँको मुनि आज लेउनुहुन्छ, कुलचिनुहुन्छ
Then thirdly, he does this work of sanctification constantly in our lives.
र त्यस्रो चाहिए, यो शांतिको परमेश्वरले लगातार आज हाम्रो जीवनमा आज शांतिको काम गणुहुद्छ
And then fourthly, he makes us perfect to do his will or enables us to do his will.
चौथो चाहिए, वाले वाको इच्छा पूरा गर्ने यो केको अथवा समता आज हाम्रा दिनुहुन्छ
And enable us to do that which is pleasing in his sight.
र वाको दृश्यमा, वाला खुशी पाने पूरा केछ, त्यो कुरा गर्नकर्निम्ति हाम्रा वाले सक्सम त्याहुन्छ
And we see also in Jeremiah chapter twenty-nine and verse eleven.
यर्मिया, जो देख्दछौं, यर्मिया उन्तिश दय को एकारपत्त मा पनि
Ah, the thoughts that he has towards us.
हामी प्रतिको वाहाको विचार
Ah, see Jeremiah chapter twenty-nine.
यर्मिया उन्तिश दय
Ah, it's a very familiar verse.
जाने रे को पत्तो चाहिए
Share promise also between us.
याँ, हाम्रो उन्तिपत्तीका पनि वो वाको
Jeremiah twenty-nine and verse eleven.
यर्मिया उन्तिश दय को एकारपत्त किनामकी तिमीरको विषयमा मलाई जुन विचार गरेकोछु, चोमो जान्दछु तिहराबिका वहिन, तर तिमीलाई बहिष्य र आशा दिने शांतिका विचारहुन्, परम प्रभु भन्नुहुन्छ
Oh, he has got good thoughts towards us.
वाको जुन्तै हामी प्रतिचाहिए, जुन्तै असल वाको विचारहुछन
Ah, man and others may have evil thoughts toward us or about us.
मानिचै, मानिसरु, अथवा अरुअरु हाम्रो विरुद्धमा उनाको खराब विचार हुन सक्छन
But our Lord's thoughts are not like that.
तर हाम्रो प्रभुको विचार चितिस्तौ, एन
They are thoughts of peace.
त्यो चाहिए, शांतिको विचारहुन्
He is not only a God of peace, his thoughts towards us are thoughts of peace.
केवल वाको शांतिको परमेश्वर मात्रै एन, तर वाको विचार हामी प्रतिपनि, वाको शांतिका विचारहुछन
See in how in several ways the Lord wants to give this peace to us.
र यहाँ उसकत्ती प्रकारले परमेश्वरले विविध प्रकारको शांतिरु हाम्रा दिन छ आनुहुन्छ
That's why Paul says it is a peace that passeth all understanding.
अगान्हले पौले भनुहुन्छ, त्यो शांति जस्तै सबै समझलाई माहित गर्ने काम गर्दछ
We cannot understand these thoughts of peace that the Lord has toward us.
र परमेश्वरको जो हामी प्रतिको शांति छ, यो शांतिको विचारलाई हामी बुझ्न नसक्छौंलाई
We do not have this peace once upon a time.
एक समय यो शांति आमीमा थियैन
We are lacking this peace greatly in our lives.
हाम्रो जीवनमा तुल्ल प्रकारले यो शांतिको कमी हामले मस्तिस्करेका थियो
But by the coming of the prince of peace into this world and by the price that he paid for us fully and completely on the cross of Calvary, we are given these blessings, all these blessings of peace.
यसकान्हले शांतिको राजकुमार, यस्प्रिति विस्तरमा त्यो शांति लेउनकर्निम्ति, आउन बाय, उतर्न बाय, र वाले त्यस कल्परिकुसमा वाको सम्पूर्ण कार्य आज दाम तिरिकन वाले गणुभया, रत्यो शांति आज हाम्रो दिन्ति वाले उपलब्ध गराउनु भया
Millions of people do not have this privilege that we have.
कोरोरो मान्छेरले आज जुन सावारके हामले पाए, उनाले पाउन सक्यै रहेका छ, एन
That is why of the world, when they look at us, when they observe us, when they watch us, they wonder as to how we are able to have this peace.
बन्छकैन, ब्रदर, इस्तात्क्यै
When the people of the world look at us and observe us, they wonder how we are able to have this peace.
र आज संसारका मान्छेरी जब हामले हेर्छन, र उनाले थाकर्छ, कुस्तो प्रकारले नहि, यो प्रकारको शांति कसले पाय, उनाले असम्बित भन्छन
Ah, there was one brother who was very young and he was suffering one day because of stones in his kidney.
रेवटा भाई, मलाई यादाहुन्छ, जो जे एक समय जो किडनीमा उदा त्यो पत्थर, बायको खण्डमा, पत्थरी बायको खण्डमा आज वेशले एउटा दुखमा, पस्तमा, पिरामा गरिलेको थियो
Ah, the pain was so much that he was rolling on the floor.
र एतिसारै पिराहुन्थ्यो उस्ताइ, क्यों पिराको कारणले गर्दकेरी, आज भिमा वो लड़ीबरी कथियो
And at the same time, the neighbors, they came to help them because they were quite a young couple at that time.
अति अदमै जवान जोडी बायको खण्डमा, कत्ती समय छिमेकेर उनालाई सहयकर्नकर्निम्ति, आउदा थे, बेलाहुन्थ्यै थिया
And when they were looking at this family, especially the couple, husband and wife, they were one, they were wondering because of one reason, they said, in that pain, we could find both of them at peace.
र उनाले जब यत्ता उनाको त्यो जुडी थियो, त्यो जुडीलाई जोडीलाई त्यो अस्तमा देख्दा, उनाले छक्यै पट्यै किनामने यो पति पत्नी दुई जनमा, आज विशेष विपत्तीमा त्यो पिराभयता पनि, आज उनाले भित्र चाहिए, त्यो शांति उनालाई अनुभव गरेका, शांति थियो
After that brother was treated, after he had undergone the surgery and everything was over, then they asked the wife of that brother, the neighbor said, how come in such a situation, at that, it happened in the middle of the night, how both of you were at such deep peace?
आज त्यो छिमेकेर जब त्यो भाईको सर्वप्राको आज चिरफार रुगरियो, सफलतापूर्वक जुन प्रकारले आज दुङ्गारु निकालियो त्यसको बातमा जब जाति बर, घरमा आए पुगे, तब छिमेकेर प्रश्न गरे, यस्तो पिरामया अस्तमा पनि, तपाइरसे कसरी अदमै शांतिपूर्वक रहेको, यस्तो रातमा पनि
We really admire your peace.
तिमाको शांतिलाई हामी अदमै यस्ता प्रसन्नसार गर्छौ
How could a peace at such a time?
अति यस्तो अस्तमा पनि कसरी यो शांतिलाई काम गरेको
And the answer that young sister gave was, this is the peace that our God has given to us.
त्यो जवान बहिनीलाई अपत्नीले त्यो छिमेकेर आजाब दिन्छ, यसै हाम्रो परमेश्वर, यो शांतिको परमेश्वरहुन्छ, वाले हामला दिनुहै
Ah, daily believer, this peace is not only for us to experience, but this peace has to be exhibited to others.
यसकान्हले यो शांति प्रेयरो, केवल हाम्रो जीवनमा हामले अनुभव गणुहुन्छ, तर यो जीवनमा हामले त्यो शांतिलाई अरु थाई पनि, आज देखाउन्न, प्रदर्शन गणुपढ्यो छ
We, we should be able to impact others, influence others with the peace that the Lord has given to us.
प्रभुलाई हामला दिन्मा जो शांति छ, यो शांतिद्वारा हामले अवराय प्रावित पान सक्नु पर्छ अरुलाई, आज उनाको जीवनमा केही साहब हामले दिन सक्नु पर्छ
That is why the Lord has given this peace to us.
यसकान्हले त्यो शांति चाहिए, परमेश्वर हामला दिनुहैको
If you go to the land of Israel, they will wish one another not as Jaimesi or good morning, but whenever they meet one another, they say, shalom.
यसकान्हले जब इजरायलको भिमा तबै जानुहुन्छ, घूमनकर्निम्ति, त्याँका बासिन डाले, तपाला जयमेसी, अरु कुनै प्राक अविवादन गणुहुन्न तर उनाले तपाइलाई सालोम बनिका न, अविवादन गणुहुन्छ
You know, shalom means peace.
अथवा तब जानुहुन्छ, हामी जान्दछौं, सालोम को अर्थन यो शांति
This, this nation of Israel has been battered so much that even today, they long and yearn for peace.
यो इजरायल राष्ट्र आज धेरै युद्धको सामना गणुपढ्यो, युद्धमा जानुपढ्यता पनि, अहिले समय पनि उनाले त्यो शांतिको आज कोशिमा उनाले लागि परेकोछ
But by wishing one another, they cannot get this peace.
तर उनाले एकादुसालाई अविवादन गर्दैमा, त्यो शांति उनालाई प्राउन सक्दैन
Their president or prime minister cannot give peace.
उनाको प्रधानमंत्री, राष्ट्रपेटले उनात्यो शांति दिन सक्दैन
Oh, the people of Israel are very intelligent, world war, world over.
सारा संसारमा नै, यदि तिहिराइले रु, अति नै ज्ञानी गणवानरुछन
Their intelligence and wisdom could not and cannot give peace to them.
तिनाको सबै ज्ञान र तिनाको बुद्धिले पनि, उनालाई यो शांति आशील गराउन सक्दैन, एन
It is only the prince of peace, the giver of peace, who can give this peace.
यसै केवल शांतिको राजकुमार, अथवा शांतिको दाता ले मात्रै त्यो शांति दिन सक्नुहुन्छ
Ah, so the question is, have you received this peace?
प्रश्न चाहिए, केही तपाइले यो शांतिलाई प्राप्त गणुभएकोछ
If not, you can call upon him even this afternoon, this morning.
यदि पाउनुभएको छ, एन, आजको यो दियुसको शेवकायमा, तबैले यो शांतिको राजकुमारलाई पुखारा गणुहोस
Ask him by simple faith.
अदमै साधरण विश्वासको साथमा प्रेयर गण, प्रार्थना गणोस
Lord, I am without this peace, grant me this peace by forgiving my sins.
र प्रभु मामा यो शांति छ, एन, मोह शांति मोचाना गर्छु, मेरो पापरलाई छमागरिका न, यो शांति मलाई प्रधान गणोस
Only when your sins are forgiven, only when you are washed by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ, only then you can receive this peace daily, believer.
जब तपाइरको पाप समा हुन्छ, जब तबाइको पाप, प्रविष्णुको रगत दुईन्छ, आज तवा मात्रै, आज यो शांति तबैले प्राप्त गण सक्नुहुन्छ
Otherwise, you will continue with your troubled life.
नत्र वन्दा तबै लगातार तबाइको आज त्यो अभि, विचलित जीवनमा तबाई अघि बडीरनुहुन्छ
You will maybe end your life without peace, continue.
आज तबै भित्र, यो अशांतिमा भरेको संसारमा तबै आज जीवरनुहुन्छ
So why do you want to continue in that state?
त्यो अस्तमा किनाम तबाई आज लगातार लागिरने
Call upon this prince of peace right now.
अहिले नै, यो शांतिको राजकुमारलाई पुखारा गणोस
And those of us who have received this peace, who are experiencing the peace, are we exhibiting and manifesting this peace?
अब तिमीरको निदिस्त यो शांतिलाई प्राप्त गणुभएकोछ, र आपनो जीवनमा यो शांतिलाई अनुभव गणुभएकोछ केही यो शांतिलाई तबैले, हामी पनि तबैले प्रदर्शन देखाउन्न सक्नुहुदैछ
This peace ought to be an impacting peace and influencing peace upon others.
यो शांतिलाई चाहिए, आज अरुलाई, अरुको जीवनमा केहीनके एउटा परिणाम लेउने, अथवा अरुको जीवनलाई प्रावित पाने आज शांति होयो
Then finally, as recipients of this peace, what is it that we should do?
र अन्तमा चाहिए, यो शांति प्राप्त गर्ने रुज्जैछौं, आज हामी, आज हाम्रो चाहिए, कर्तव्य चाहिए केही भन्छ, हामले केही गण्यपर्छ
First of all, first of all, we must endeavor to live with this peace.
र सर्वन्दा पहिला चाहिए, यो शांतिलाई कायम रख्नकर्निम्ति हामले यत्न गण्यपर्छ, त्यसमा लागि पढ्यो पर्छ
Second Corinthians, chapter thirteen.
दुस्ता कुरंति तेरा दय
And verse eleven.
एकारपत्तमा
Second Corinthians thirteen and verse eleven.
दुस्ता कुरंति तेरा दय को एकारपत्तमा, अन्तमा भाहिरो, आनंदित हो, शिद्ध हो, शांति हो, साहसी हो, एकै मनका हो, मेलमिलापमा बस र प्रेम र शांतिक परमेश्वर तिमीरको साथमा रनुहुन्छ
Ah, the God of love and peace will be with you, what for? So that you may live in peace.
र प्रेम र शांतिक परमेश्वर, तिमी साथमा रनुहुन्छ, किनाम, आज मेलमिलापमा रन्याको लागि
See also the book of Romans, chapter twelve.
रोमी बार, बारदय मा हामी पहुँसौ
And verse eighteen.
बारदय को अठारपत्तमा हामी पहुँसौ
If it be possible as much as light in you, live peaceably with all men.
सम्भो भए, तिमीर बाट जाँसम हुन सक्छ, सबै मानिसर सम, मेलमिलापमा बस
As far as possible, maintain peace with one another, even among, among the others in this world also.
र एकादु, सब्दो सम, एकादुसर सम, शांतियो बस, याँ सम, संसारका मान्छेर सम पनि, त्यो मेलमिलापमा कायम राख
It is true, something or the other comes in between when we try to, when our peace is disturbed.
जाउदा, कतिवरा कुरा राम्रा जीवनमा हुन सक्छ, जब हाम्रो जीवनमा अशांति आउदा छ
Ah, try to set it right at once.
र अहिले चान, चानै नै, त्यता ठिक्ठाकर्यानुहोस
Whenever your peace is disturbed, daily believer, there will be a pricking in your heart by the Holy Spirit of God.
जब तबाइको जीवनमा त्यो शांतिमाई उने प्रकारको बादा हुन्छ, अशांति हुन्छ बन्देकी, तवा आत्मद्वारा तबाइको हृदयमा एउटा घोष्णे काम तपाइलाई आज यस्ता दोस्लाने काम हुद्छ
You got angry on that brother.
अथवा तिमी त्यो भाईसमा तिमी रिशायकोछौ
You are utter a lie to that sister.
तिमीले त्यो बहिनीलाई झुटबोलेकाछौ
Ah, the Holy Spirit will not leave you, will keep on convicting you.
यो पोहित्र आत्मले तबै त्यसै छोड्न, एन, तपाला अदमै कायम पारी रहाद्छ
And you have to respond immediately and see that it is set right so that you are able to maintain this peace.
र यदि आज तबैसमा बात गर्यो बन्देकी, तबै त्यस्ता ठिक्ठाकर्यानुहोस, मेलमिलाप कायम गर्यानुहोस, ताकि तबाइको शांति चाहिए, तपाईमा कायम रहेको
Ah, and then, secondly, we have to share with one another.
यो शांतिराज हामी एकादुसर सम बाँचुर पनि गण्यपर्छ, बाँढ्न पर्छ
As I mentioned just now, you must be able to influence others with this peace.
यो शांतिद्वारा मलाई अरुलाई पनि तबैले आज प्रावित पान सक्नुपढ्यो
Ah, how do we do that?
त्यो कसरी हामी गण सक्छौं
That is why the God has made every one of us, every believer, as an amped peace.
किनामने की, परमेश्वरले नै, हामलाई सबैको निम्ति हामी एकेकलाई चाहिए, त्यो शांति, आज बुशांतिको अथवा राजदुत बनाउन भएकोछ
Ah, he is not calling us as givers of peace or messengers of peace, but he says we are ambassadors of peace.
किनामने वाले, हामलाई केवल शांतिको संदेश मात्रै एन, आज हाम्रा शांति दिने वहिन, तर वाले चाहिए, हामला चाहिए शांतिको राजदुत बनाउन भएकोछ
Because kingdom of peace.
किनामने हामी चाहिए, शांतिको राज, राज्यमा छौ
The job of an ambassador is a very royal job.
किनामने की, जुन्तै राजदुतको जुन्तै काम चाहिए, त्यो अति नै राजेकीय काम हो
An ambassador's work is not in his own country but in some other country.
आज केही राजदुतको काम चाहिए, अपना देश भित्र वहिन, तर देश देखि, अरु देशमा उल्लेख गण्यपर्छ
He, he represents his country there, takes care of the interests of the country in that other foreign land.
र आपनो देशको खातिर, उस्ते अरु देशमा, आपनो देशको सबै कुरा भलाहिको निम्ति चाहिए, काम गरेको छ
For that, you must have a good knowledge of that country and the people of his own country.
र त्यसको लागि चाहिए, तबैला देशको सम्मानमा बहु ज्ञान उनुपढ्यो, र देश बासियरको सम्मानमा पनि, तबाला पूरा ज्ञान उनुपढ्यो
Daily believer, the Lord has not chosen to appoint his angels to be the ambassadors of peace.
प्रेयरो, परमेश्वरले, सर्वदुतरलाई चाहिए, यो शांतिको राजकुमार भाउन्न वाले नियुक्त दिनु बाय, एन
But he is counting on you and I to play that role of an ambassador upon this earth.
यस्प्रिति विस्तरमा, राजदुतको भिमीका निभाउन्नकर्निम्ति, तपाइरा, मलाई, अथवा हामीलाई वाले इसको निम्ति यो गठनुभए, वाले त्यो गणतीमा निभए
What an honor and privilege the Lord has given to us.
यो कत्ती छुलो सम्मान र सौभाग्य, प्रभुलाई हाम्रा दिनुहैकोछ
Ah, see Romans, chapter ten.
यहाँ रोमी दसदय
And verse fifteen.
र पंद्रपत
In the middle of the second part, it says, how beautiful are the feet of them that preach the gospel of peace and bring glad tidings of good things.
दोस्रो भागमा लेखेकोछ, जस्तै लेखेकोछ, शांतिको सुसमाचार प्रसार गण, र असल पूरा आर्कन, सुबसमाचार, लेउने अर्का पाउँ, कत्ती सुंदर
This speaks about taking the gospel of peace to others.
यस्तै चाहिए, आज जुन्तै प्रविष्णुको शांतिको सुसमाचार चाहिए, अरु थाई पूरै कामले देखाउन्दछ
And the feet of such proclaimers of gospel are beautiful in the sight of God.
यस्ता जुन्तै पाइला आज शांतिको सुसमाचार लियर, अघि वसन, त्यो परमेश्वरको दिशीमा चाहिए, अति सुंदर पाइला रु
Many years ago, when I was in one place, I saw a servant of God, a senior servant of God, struggling to enter into a bus to go to a village.
धेरै समय अगाडी, एउटा जगामा, एउटा ठाउमा, यरा प्रभुको दास चाहिए, एउटा गाउमा जानकर्निम्ति, एउटा गाडी, बस भित्र चर्णकर्निम्ति बस भीत्र चढ़न निम्त उल्लेख संगर्ष गरे रहे को त्यां के थियो
आई वस सरप्राइज व्हेन आई सो हिम
मैं छके पड़े जब मैं वाला देखी
एंड आई आस्क तू व्हाय आर यू स्ट्रगलिंग तू गेट इनटू दिस बस व्हाय डोंट यू गो इन अन बेटर बस
आई मैं वाला प्रश्न करे किन्नर तपाई आज तो बस में चढ़न निम्त खचा कस्म तो भाई ले आज दुहा गणन हुन्न स अज राम रो अरु को बस में किन्नर जान हुन्न
देन देन इस से ओनली दिस बस कैन टेक मी तू डेट विलेज
र उसे बन्न स यो केवल यो बस ले मात्रे मला तो गांव में प्रवाह न सक्स
एंड दिस मैन ऑफ गॉड वस हाईली डायबिटिक
ये यो मान चे चे वड़ा जून चे चीनी को रोक को जून चे वड़ा बीमारी चाहिए
एंड आई सो हिम ट्रेवलिंग विदोर अनी फुटवेयर
र वाले कुने प्रकार के जुत्ता अरु नलाई कन ने विवाह तिवम में यात्रा गणन
देन आस्क देन आस्क तू व्हाय डोंट यू वेयर समथिंग फॉर योर फीट व्हाय आर यू गोइंग लाइक डेट एक्सपोजिंग योर फीट
मैं ले भने किन्नर तपाई ले जुत्ता अरु चप्पली केही नलाई कन खाली कुट्टा अपनो कुट्टा नांगे कुट्टा तो भाई आज एता होता है इन हुन्न स
देन इस आंसर वास डेट प्लेस इस अन वेरी स्लशी प्लेस अन दिस फुटवेयर्स अन